Good evening. This Town of Adams Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, September 16th, 2020 is now in session. We are conducting this meeting remotely. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A recording of this meeting is available after the meeting if anyone should wish to have that. The Rule of Ten is in place for this room according to code enforcement due to the size of the room. And we thank our friends at Northern Berkshire Community Television who is providing real-time access to tonight's meeting, and they too will be posting a link soon after the meeting. I do have here some information for those of you who are watching at home. If your audio is low, which we have heard that is an issue, we do ask that you contact the Spectrum Customer Support Line. The number is 833-780-1880. And I believe that that phone number will come up on the screen. We'll also post that information on the town's website. With us this evening, just to do a little housekeeping here, in the room you have myself, Chair Christine Hoyt, I have member John Duval, and member Joe Novak. Also in the room is Town Administrator Jay Green, Administrative Assistant Deb Dunlap, interim chief Troy Bacon. With him are his special guest, who is up for appointment, is Scott McCourt, his spouse, town clerk Haley Mesawar, and Peter Gentile representing Northern Berkshire Community Television. On the call attending remotely, I do have town council. And it looks like we have a number of individuals. I believe code enforcement is on here, maybe video and phone. I have I Berkshers, Tammy Daniels, Mike Geary, Jake, is it Brissette?
Correct.
Okay. Kathy Moran, Kathy Foster. And I have on here an iPhone user. I will need to have your first and last name for our attendance records. So if you could provide that at this time, we would appreciate that. So the iPhone user, can I get a first and last name?
Priyanka Ben Patel.
Thank you for the transfer license, correct? Excellent. Okay. I will ask all of you who are on the Zoom call, if you are not speaking, if you could please mute yourselves, just so there's not background noise that makes it difficult for all of us in the room. We do have you all up on the screen so that we can all see you in anything that you should chat in the chat box. And I rely on my fellow board members to help me see if there's somebody else to admit into the room. I think those are all the logistics for the Zoom meeting. I do want to just remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and we are doing so using Zoom and Northern Berkshire Community Television.
Madam Chair, just quickly, I see a new name.
Yep, they're connecting to audio.
I'm not sure.
Yep, that's it. Yep. And we have legal counsel for them, Matthew Porter. So Neil Patel and Matthew Porter are now on the call. Thank you, Joe. With all of that, if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose experience, one nation, under God. People who are on the call can still hear us though. Jim was always my check to make sure that we could see. I do have another iPhone user, so I see that you muted yourself, but if you could, maybe in the chat function, give us your first and last name, that would be appreciated. Oh, I think, I'm sorry, I do have that name. It's Mr. Patel, correct? Okay. We are getting close to the 7:10 public hearing. So first time of business are the approval of minutes. All members can vote on August 19th, 25th, and September 2nd.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 19th, August 25th, and September 2nd, and also request the waiver of the reading of the minutes.
I have a motion by John Duval. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I don't know if member Duval mentioned August 27th. I think he just said three of them.
He only said three because he can't vote on the August 25th.
Okay, then let's vote on that and then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a first and a second. Any discussion on those three sets? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. We don't have to because all members are in the room. Mr. Menchur is not attending. So, aye, sorry. But thanks for catching that.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of August 27th, 2020, as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion by Joe. I will second. Any discussion on August 27th? Hearing none, all in favor?
Madam Online, shall I look at Jim?
Oh, if you could mute yourself. Thank you. All those in favor for August 27th? Aye, myself and Joe, and one abstention?
Excellent, yes.
It is, I have the 7:09. I just want to make sure, I believe that all members who are here for the public hearing, it is 7:10 now, all members for the public hearing are on the call, and we do have town council on the call. The public hearing this evening is to review a transfer of an all-alcohol package store license from O'Garry's Package Store located at 60 Commercial Street in Adams, and transferring it to, is it, Anil Liquor Inc.? Someone's going to help me with that pronunciation, I'm hoping.
Anil Liquor.
What is it?
Anil Liquor.
Anil Liquor? Okay. Doing business at O'Garry's Package Store at 60 Commercial Street. So as it is 7:10 PM, we can go into a public hearing, but I do need a motion to do so.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing for the reason of the transfer of the all-alcohol package store license from O'Garry's Package Store Incorporated at 60 Commercial Street in Adams to Anil Liquor Incorporated, doing business as O'Garry's Package Store at 60 Commercial Street in Adams.
I have a motion by John and a second by Joe. All in favor to go into public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. So we are in public hearing, so in front of us we do have the full paperwork for the transfer of license. Town council has reviewed the paperwork and has moved it forward to the board. I do see that, I believe it's Attorney Matthew Porter, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is on the call and you are representing Anil Liquor Incorporated, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And do I have anyone representing O'Garry's? I think I heard.
Just me, Mike Geary.
Mike, okay, thank you, Mike. I was looking for you on the screen, sorry. Okay. So who should I have this open up to?
I'm happy to give a quick introduction to the board.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, board. First off, my condolences for the loss of your colleague. My name is Matthew Porter, represent Anil Liquor Inc. Before the board, this is the package store license related to O'Garry's Package Store at 60 Commercial Street. Along with me today is the President of Anil Liquor Corp., Suresh Kumar Patel, along with Priyanka Ben Patel, Mrs. Patel is the Vice President and Secretary of the Corporation. So a fairly straightforward transfer. This would be the sale of O'Garry's Package Store and the license that goes along with it. There are no major anticipated changes to the operation whatsoever. Both Mr. Patel and Mrs. Patel are experienced licensed operators. They own a store in Williamstown Spirit Shop. They also own a liquor store in North Adams. So they certainly understand the importance and the responsibilities that come along with operating a liquor store. They have not had any issues at those locations whatsoever. And they have an assistant manager at the Spirit Shop in Williamstown that will be moving down here to run the day-by-day operations. He is certified after all the employees subsequently be required to be so as well. So certainly I can answer any questions that the board may have. There is also a pledge of license. They are financing this transaction through the Bank of Hope, and that bank in relation to taking a loan on the, or to giving a loan, I should say, and the business is taking a pledge of that license back as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Over the paperwork, I would find, and I just want Attorney Porter to mention that the licenses, you're being asked to approve a pledge of the license, so I just wanted you to be aware of that as well. Apart from that, I'm okay with it.
So it's a, it's a transfer of license and pledge of collateral?
It's a transfer.
That would have to be.
Yes, you'd have to have separate votes to approve each, each item.
Can you, town council, can you please explain pledge of collateral, please?
Well, the pledge of collateral is, as Attorney Porter indicated, the entity that's coming in to take over O'Garry's, to purchase O'Garry's, is borrowing money from a bank and to secure the repayment of that money back to the bank. It's, and it's very common practice to do it with a business like this, not only do you pledge as collateral the real estate, you also pledge any interest that they have in the license that the board has, that the board grants. So it's very common in transactions like this where it's being financed that they will ask and you will approve a pledge of the license as additional collateral.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, since you're representing O'Garry's, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No. I don't think so. Everything seems to be running smoothly.
Okay. Any questions for anybody, Joe?
Yes, I just had one quick question. I don't consume alcohol, so I've never been in O'Garry's. I was wondering, is it, any spirits sold there, or is it just beer and wine?
It's all alcohol license.
All alcohol license, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Since we are in public hearing, and if there are no other questions from the board, I will open it up to anybody on the call who has any questions that pertain to this item I'm not hearing any, so I think we can go ahead and close public hearing at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. That is unanimous. So we are out of public hearing?
I'll make a motion to transfer the all-alcohol Package Store Incorporated located on 60 Commercial Street, Adams, to Anil Liquor Incorporated, doing business as O'Garry's Package Store at 60 Commercial Street, Adams. And I believe this will go through, and I just want to wish the new owners well and glad that you came to Adams.
Okay, I have a motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to add what Joe has said, I want to address to the community of Adams, the small business owners, and welcome the Patel family to Town of Adams.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the transfer? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That is unanimous. As town council pointed out, we do have a second item, which is the pledge of collateral that also has to be approved. And that is the pledge of collateral for the Anil Liquor Incorporated. Correct, Ed?
The pledge of collateral is actually to the lender. Is it Rockland Trust?
It's Bank of Hope on this transaction.
Bank of Hope.
It would be a pledge of inventory and pledge of license to Bank of Hope.
Okay, so you're going to ask for a motion to approve the pledge of the license as collateral to the Bank of Hope?
Are you saying Bank of Hope?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Remote meetings, I can't hear every word, so I apologize. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the pledge of collateral, pledge of license, I'm sorry, as collateral to Hope.
Bank of Hope.
Bank of Hope.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I'd like to ask town council, because I wasn't sure how it was stated. I'm sure John did it correctly vote. Was that stated correctly?
It was stated perfectly.
Okay.
Gold star.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Joe. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You are very welcome. We'll go ahead and process that paperwork accordingly and get you all going.
Very good, appreciate it. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give everyone a moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Everyone's more than welcome to stay on, but I also understand if you sign off. Okay. So since the public hearing, I did see that somebody signed on with a phone number. The last four digits are 0477. If you can please state your name. It's an area code 413, and the last four digits 0477. Who am I speaking with?
Hi, that's Becky Ferguson.
Hi, Becky, thank you. Okay. All right. That brings us to public comment. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak to the Board of Selectmen about an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we will move forward with the agenda. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, this is our, our first meeting without our colleague Jim, who unfortunately we lost last week. So we have somebody missing at our table tonight, although he was attending by Zoom, so I kind of was waiting for him to call in tonight. But I'm also sitting here with a hole in my heart mourning the loss of Jim. He was a fantastic colleague, dedicated to service, dedicated to our community, and dedicated to his family. I know I'm going to miss some Facebook posts of Buddy and Lexi down at the lake. They provided him an awful lot of joy. But I, I wanted to just reflect on, Jim taught me an awful lot about service to this community. He taught me an awful lot about the community. And over the last week, the stories that people have shared with me demonstrated his reach and just his connection to everyone throughout. I told many people that his last conversation with me was about making sure that I communicated to people his strength and that he was doing well, assuring everybody that he was doing okay. And we talked about meeting logistics and what the meeting schedule was going to look like for September, and assuring me that he would, he wouldn't be missing any meetings because God knows he didn't want to miss a meeting. But it's hard to sit at this table not having him here with his big heart, his sense of humor, but I think mostly I'll just miss his devotion to this community. So I, I wanted to just pause here and see if any of the other members of the board wanted to comment.
Madam Chair, just a few words. I met Jim a little over two years ago during our election. He was running for an open seat, and I heard of, I'd heard of Jim. I didn't know him personally. My older siblings did, and I heard some great stories, as I'm sure many people in the community have many good stories, who had some cheshire of Jim in the early days. But at the election and during the election process, we had, we had debates and, you know, I've been a political officer most of my adult life, and he made me feel at ease. He says, we're going to work together, put his arm around me, and it seemed like he was the, the elder statesman instead of me. But I'm going to miss the conversations we've had, discussions on, hey, John, you wearing a tie tonight, or you wearing a suit coat to this meeting? Just a, just a, just a great guy. But again, I've been doing politics for a long time here in Town of Adams, but he inspired me with his community service, with the projects he took out, the way he responded to citizens' concerns, every phone call he received, he, he, there was action. Whether the response was what you wanted to hear or not, he got you an answer. And that's, that's old-time selectmen work, and I respected that. So I'm going to miss him terribly, and all I can do is, is try to follow in his great qualities of, of being a great selectman, the best that I can be, and he'll continue to inspire me. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I've known Jim for many, many years. He was just a hometown guy, always says hi, always was there to see what you needed, how you needed it, and he always was just a polite type person. I was communicating frequently to Jim for about two months, and he was strong in his faith. I really know that, and as was mentioned by our, my other two colleagues, that the dedication to family, friends, volunteering. But the most important thing now was, to me, is that Jim was dedicated to the Lord. He was devout in his religion, and he now is in the hands of the Lord. I believe he's at the gates of purgatory, and because of the type of person that he was, that the gates will be open and he'll be in heaven. And I firmly believe that, and I want to pass on my condolences to his wife's path, the immediate family, and Adams is sure a loss to somebody that was a big part of our community, and I certainly will miss him along with all the other people that were fortunate enough to know him. So God bless you, Jim, and God bless the family.
Not easy, but I'm sure Jim wouldn't want us to miss a beat, and he'd want us to continue on. And so we do have some new business in front of us tonight. So we'll start with the first item, which is an appointment of Adele Hale to the Adams Housing Authority. So in our packet, there's a letter to the Board of Selectmen. The Adams Housing Authority currently has an opening to fill a vacant position for tenant board commissioners. The authority currently has three board commissioners, and we are in need to fill that position. We have a tenant who lives at our Columbia Valley Housing for the Elderly Development who is very interested in joining our board. Her name is Adele Hale, and her interest in the board was presented and voted to approve at our board meeting that was held on August 27th, 2020. The Housing Authority is respectfully requesting the Adams Board of Selectmen to appoint Adele Hale to fill the vacant tenant board position until the next town election. I appreciate your time and consideration. Sincerely, Executive Director Patricia Volpe. We do need a motion to appoint based on this recommendation.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to appoint Adele Hale to the Adams Housing Authority Tenant Board.
It's tenant board commissioner.
Tenant Board Commissioner.
Yep.
And I'm going to second that and thank Adele for pitching in and helping me.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. That is unanimous. So we will let them know that that has gone forward. Next, I, is the town clerk is asked to share some information about the upcoming November election. And so I think if you'll stand at that microphone, then folks at home will hear you. And I think I need to get you a, thank you. One, excuse me, take that one there, which, sorry. Thank you. I'm just here to speak a little bit about the upcoming November 3rd state election. There, if you haven't, if you did not do your postcard for the September 1st primary election and you did not mail it into us, you would have received another postcard in the mail this past weekend. Or if you haven't received it, you should be getting another one. I brought mine with me just to show the audience out there in TV land. With this, you can ask to vote by mail. Here's your application. You sign it, mail it back to your local clerk, whether it's here in Adams or our neighboring community, and they will mail you a ballot when the ballots come in. So if you did not receive one of these postcards, chances are you've already submitted a postcard to your local town clerk's office and we will mail you a ballot when the ballots come in. If that's not your choice of wanting to vote by mail, there's a couple of other options for you. You can vote in person during early voting hours that are going to start throughout the state, beginning October 17th, that is a Saturday. We're going to have four hours of voting that day. All this will be posted on the website. You're going to have two weeks of in-person early voting. You're going to have lots of time to come in and vote, or again, you can vote by mail, or again, you can go to the polls and vote on November 3rd because we will be there between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. So again, early voting will start in the state of Massachusetts, beginning October 17th. And Adams is going to end on Thursday, October 29th. There's, we're going to have Saturday, Sunday, Monday through Thursday, Saturday and Sunday through Monday through Thursday. Those hours are going to be pretty much nine to four, except for on the weekends, we're going to do four hour blocks. So again, it will be posted on the website or you can obviously call our office. We're more than happy to tell you what the hours are going to be, but they will be posted on the website and they will be posted on the Secretary of the Commonwealth website also. And if you're concerned about the ballot questions, you're all going to be getting a red book in the mail. So you can read up about the questions before you even come to the polls. That will help getting our lines through the polls on November 3rd or even if you come for early voting. If you already read up on the questions, whether you want to vote yes or no, you already know that. Bring yourself a cheat sheet. There's two questions on the ballot and you'll be able to come in, do your voting and get out. It shouldn't take you very long, but take your time, make sure you vote who you want to vote for. But again, if you haven't already, if you didn't get a postcard, you probably won't get a postcard. But if you didn't request one in September, please call our office. We'll mail you an application, early voting in person. And again, you're going to get your red book and read up on your questions. And for all of you voters, all of you residents out there that are not a registered voter and you certainly want to vote in the November 3rd election, I will tell you that you need to get your voter registration in. It needs to be in by October 24th, but please don't wait that long. Please get it in sooner than later. You can call our office, we'll mail you an application. Or you can go online to the Secretary of the State's website and you can vote, you can register to vote online that way. Or if you happen to be going to renew your license in the very near future, feel free to register at the RMB2 or online at their website also. So there's lots going on between now and November 3rd. And I know I sound like a broken record, but it's very important if you want to get out and vote for the November 3rd election. We already have in our office, we have probably about 1,600 requests for ballots. So as soon as those ballots do come in, we will get them out as soon as we can. Again, the number's pretty big. It's already 1,600, so it's going to take, it's myself and my staffers and Paula, so there's only two of us, so please have patience with us. If your neighbor or your sister or your brother happens to get their ballot on one day and you don't get yours right away, just have a patience and, you know, it might take a day or two to get yours, just because you live within different precincts within the town. We try to get them out, you know, for precincts versus, you know, just picking randomly how to, you know, we have a system. So if one side of town gets it and the other side doesn't, give it a day or two and you probably will get your ballot. If not, please feel free to call us. I just was talking with somebody a little earlier and they were asking about the dropbox out in front of Town Hall, which has been wonderful for all of our departments within here at Town Hall. But it gets especially full during election season and tax season, so we're happy to report that too. But it gets full. We do check it throughout the day once these ballots go out. And we do check it on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. We are coming in and we are emptying the dropbox and we are pulling out the ballot on a regular basis, so no need to worry. So you can always use the dropbox or you can mail your ballot. You don't need to put postage on it. Postage is being paid for by the state. No need for postage. But, and feel free that our Adams Post Office has done an excellent job for our past two elections and I'm sure they're going to do an excellent job for this upcoming election too. So feel safe that your ballot's going to make it back to us. You can track your ballot if you want. There's going to be instructions inside with your ballot. You can track your ballot for when we receive it. We put it into the computer. So there's all kinds of ways, but again, feel free to call our office. We're more than happy to give you an update on if we've received your ballot or not. And if anybody has a question, just give our office a call. Do you guys have any questions? No, they sound like a broken record.
Yeah. I will talk a little bit about absentee ballots.
Okay, absentee ballots are pretty much the same as our mail-in voter applications. We, the reason they have absentee ballots prior to the mail-in was because you were going to be out of town or you weren't able to get to the polls for a physical condition or religious belief or something like that. So you can request an absentee ballot too. It's the same ballot though. They're the same. An absentee ballot and a mail-in ballot are exactly the same. The wording on the top says absentee slash mail-in ballot. So if you requested absentee, do know that it's the same ballot that you're going to get if you requested it for mail-in also.
Okay, and one last question. There's been a lot of bad and forms about voting by mail. Some states are very gung-ho for it while others are kind of using it for a crush to, you know, deter people from voting. And that's the way I kind of see it. But I was just wondering if somebody mails in something and it's posted before the date of the election and you don't get it till the next day, does that count, right?
Yeah, well, it certainly counts. Yes. It just needs to be posted by November 3rd.
Yeah, okay.
But again, I would ask, do it earlier than later. You know, don't wait till October 31st on a Saturday and decide, "Oh, I really wanted to vote by mail." That's really not going to happen. You know, that's going to be very difficult for that to happen. But do come to the polls and vote. I don't want to discourage anybody from coming to the polls and voting. If that's the way you want to come and vote, we're more than welcome to have you come in. We have all the precautions in place, so there's no need to worry about that. But again, if you feel like you want to do the mail-in or the absentee, we're more than happy to accommodate you that way. The goal is to get our percentage up and to get you out and vote. That's the most important thing here. So I'm hoping for a bigger turnout. Four years ago, I think it was at 68% of our voters and in 2012, I think it was like 66%. So let's try to get the percentage out. As we saw in the primary election in September, it was about 30%, which was really good. But do you know that a good majority of those were mail-in or absentee voters also or in-person early voting too? So, but your voters out there, you have options this year. You have lots of options. Vote by mail, go to your local city or town clerk and vote in person during October 17th and till October 30th, or go to the polls and vote on November 3rd.
Yeah, just a comment. I personally feel that there's going to be a large turnout, not just in Adams, I think throughout the country.
Oh, I definitely hope so.
It's kind of a stark choice between the people running for president.
Well, I hope the people get out and make their choice. That's what it's all about.
I have a procedure question. With these mailing votes, you could have a couple thousand.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And they cannot be opened until the election is closed, right? The night of the election, right?
Actually, we, as they come in, we process them through our computer. We check them to make sure that they match up with signatures and then we store them in our safe here at Town Hall. On election day, I'll pick them up. We will deliver them to the polls, bright and early, at 6 o'clock in the morning, between 6:00 and 6:30. And when polls open at 7:00, we will start and process all of these ballots. They will then be, the envelopes will then be opened systematically throughout each precinct. They're opened and they're processed. And I, there will be poll workers that are trained to process these ballots. They actually act like the person who's the mailing voter. They have to go up to the check-in table and present that name. They have a list, present that name, get their name checked off, go to the back checkout table, do it again, and then they will stand at the tabulator and feed through that ballot for that particular person. This will get done throughout the day on November 3rd. It will probably take from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. But if they're not all processed by 8:00 at night, we certainly will stay open for that and we will finish processing those ballots. But our goal will be to certainly get them all processed within that 13-hour period.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last question alluding to what John had just mentioned. When they're opened, there'll be two people, right? Looking at or the checking ballot?
Yeah, definitely. Yep, definitely. Yep.
Good, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Chief Bacon has asked for the board to consider the appointment of a special police officer. And in your packet is a letter from the town administrator. Dear Chairman Hoyt, please accept this letter as a request to the Board of Selectmen to appoint Scott McCourt as a special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with provisions of Section 86-5 of the Bylaws of the Town of Adams. If appointed in contingent upon successfully passing and completing any hiring requirements of the Town of Adams, Officer McCourt will work as needed at the current Special Police Officer Grade 5 Step 1 rate of $16.97 per hour, respectfully submitted. Town Administrator Jay Green. And with us this evening is Officer McCourt, who we haven't been able to see and to officially say happy retirement from your full-time position. Strange times have prevented us from gathering and celebrating your service to the department and your retirement, but we thank you for all that you have done and that you have stepped forward to continue to help the police department. And I can turn things over to either the town administrator or to Chief Bacon if you want to say anything else about this appointment. I know that the information was sent to the board about the role of a special police officer and this is in line with what we've done with other appointments, but...
Yes, I'll be brief. Scott and I met about two weeks ago. We had a good conversation, kind of a meet and greet, because that was really the first time that we met with each other. And expressed to me his interest in being a special officer with the Town of Adams. And I commend retired Sergeant McCourt for his continued support and desire to continue to serve our community. So I approved it, I accepted it and moved it to Jay for final approval on the board, but I appreciate Scott wanting to continue to serve the Town of Adams.
Correcting me on the rank. I apologize. You retired sergeant and you earned that title, so my sincere apology. So it's nice to stay in here with you too. Can we do have this before the board? And I do need a motion to make this appointment.
Madam Chair, prior to the motion, I believe we're, 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 we're interested in working, continue to work for the community, but, you know, years ago, he was the president of the Adams Police Athletic League. And during those years, it was, I've been part of the youth sports for many years and part of the basketball league's coaching over the years. And when he was running it, it was run very well. He did an outstanding job in preparation for the league throughout the season and then into the travel teams and then into the closing. So we're very fortunate and thank him for not only his community service to the town as an officer, but also volunteer your time to the youth of this community through the PAL League. And I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to appoint Scott McCourt as a special police officer for the Adams Police Department in accordance with the provisions of 86-5 of the Bylaws of the Town of Adams. The pay rate will be a great, please, sir, five, $16.97 per hour.
I have a motion by John. Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Welcome back. All right. But Chief Bacon, you asked to talk to the Board of Selectmen this evening about Halloween this year. So did I believe he wanted, I think the town administrator had a few words before which we go.
Sure, I discussed the context. Obviously, Halloween is going to be, is coming up. There's going to be discussion about that in light of the midst of the health pandemic. However, we, Chief Bacon and I, we're sitting down and having a conversation. We're reviewing the positive energy in the community that was established by the wave grade that we had. And we have assumed, although there hasn't been any official guidance yet delivered, code force when Officer Blaisdale informed me this evening before the start of the meeting that the Department of Public Health will be issuing some guidance for communities probably this Friday on their weekly 3 o'clock call. So we're not sure yet what's going to happen. Some other communities across Commonwealth have already prescribed essentially door-to-door Halloween trick-or-treating. But Chief and I were discussing and we feel as though we need to do something for the community. We don't want to just not do anything simply because of the health pandemic. And with that, Chief presented what I thought was an excellent idea. And we have that tonight. Chief will present that to the board this evening for the board's endorsement. And if it's something that the board would like us to pursue, we're happy to do that and hopefully be able to offer something for our community this holiday. So Chief, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. About a couple weeks ago, I was having a discussion with some of my staff and we were collaborating together and trying to figure out how we can continue the tradition of trick-or-treating as Administrator Green said, to have energy, something happy and positive go on in our community. And we thought of an idea where we would divide the community up into precincts and officers and potentially other city or town employees to be involved in this as well. But we would drive around in these precincts and the idea would be someone or people in their houses, kids or whoever, would dress up as they normally would on that night and come out of their house. And we would drive around and throw candy or give candy, whatever, however that evolves or develops into, to those particular houses. That way we still are having the tradition and maybe even bringing a little joy to our community. And in a nutshell, that's where we're at. There's still some things to still kind of iron out, but assuming that there are no massive restrictions on Halloween, that's kind of where we're headed right now.
We'll be seeking donations for the candy from our residents and business, so we'll be developing kind of a request for that. Some of the thoughts that we had, our local residents and households were going to purchase candy anyway for their local trick-or-treaters, continue to do that, sealed candy in individual bags, but donate that to us. And essentially we'll mobilize the town fleet and we've already had quite a few town employees that come in. My spouses are already ready, willing to come up and assist and do this. And I don't know, Chairman Hoyt, if you wanted to mention already that we have some donations, potential donations in the wings already for candy. Yeah, I've, I've never, uh, I've always had lots of rewards for the generosity of this community, which is able to generate, so we already have some, some donations lined up and floated the ideas, folks.
To one soul. Just, uh, one individual I floated, if I wondered if, uh, after hearing the chief talk to me about it on Monday, if there would be, uh, an appetite from the business community to, um, support this and, uh, you're already several hundred dollars in donations, uh, at least committed, the rest of the will off on writing checks, um, but there does seem to be an interest to support the initiative, at least from the business community. Um, so I, I know that the Board of Selectmen typically sets the hours for Halloween, um, and as I stated earlier, uh, this is probably our last, uh, meeting in the month of September. So I thought it was timely to at least start having the conversation about if this is a, a path to go down, you know, giving the chief our, our blessing, uh, so to speak, to, to move forward, to present, um, a more detailed plan, because this does, um, this is definitely different, um, and I, I appreciated his willingness to take this on and if that's something that the boards would like to see happen and then come back with a more detailed plan at our first meeting in October.
Exactly, and I would say that whatever plan that we, we come up with will be ran by the Health Department to make sure it's done correctly, safely. We want to make it a positive experience that night. And, uh, so we're still in the planning phase, but I would, I would ask for your support to continue this planning process and moving forward with the anticipation of me coming back to you with a final plan.
So if there's consensus on that, but...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I agree with the statement. The Town of Adams has always been very generous, uh, but it is refreshing to hear that we've come across a, um, a roadblock and, um, sometimes in the past it would probably just be, well, we can't do that. Um, but this time it's very refreshing to hear that, um, the, the chief and others are going to, are, are bringing it forward with the Town Administrator innovative idea to be able to continue with the theme of Halloween and, uh, to be, to, uh, support the youth of our community. So it's, again, uh, very refreshing and I, I support this effort.
Yeah, um, I'd like to say, um, I support it, but, uh, just, I think not to correct John, but I think that this community is timed for in a way that they were now in the past that we would have come forward and helped our children. I think that we've made a habit of helping everybody in this community. Um, I just think one thing logistically that's gonna have to happen, you'll probably have to have two vehicles going to each precinct and have a vehicle go by first like a police car with the lights on, knowing that soon they'll be coming with the candy because it'd be difficult to assess the time when, you know, they were coming and, you know, people would be outside anticipating. So you'd probably have to have a harbinger going forward before the people that are gonna give up candy, uh, arrive so that they'll be out there waiting because that will streamline time also.
Good point, thank you.
Yep.
So it sounds like you've got consensus to move forward with, um, some plans and working with code enforcement and Town Administrator and, uh, look forward to hearing about the details soon.
Thank you.
I just have one other question. What are you gonna address it?
I don't know yet. I mean, I, I drive a white car, cause it, and it's kind of a blank plate. So I, I can, I can probably put some decorations on it if you want.
It looks good like a basket.
That's right.
Right, right around with basketball field.
And he told me today he always wanted to be a firefighter.
Oh, yeah?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
On a tray. All right. Thank you, Chief. That brings us to, um, the next item under new business. Um, uh, the item here is to review an, an open meeting law complaint that has been filed by Catherine Foster. Um, Town Council is in receipt of the open meeting law complaint, um, and has asked that we refer this to council to respond on our behalf. Um, the board did receive... I believe, but Ed, do you want to speak to any of this?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to say about it is that, uh, you're doing this pursuant to the open meeting law and the only thing I ask that is that you indicate that you're referring the complaint to me for response.
Okay. So the, um, action item for the board this evening is to refer this, um, complaint to Town Council for response.
If there's no discussion, um, I see that the person that was, uh, filing that complaint is, uh, um, viewing in, um, is there anything that she would like to say? Do you think that's legitimate to ask?
I, I don't believe so.
I would refer that to Town Council.
I would refer that to Town Council as well.
All right, and I'm going to make a motion to refer...
I was actually asking, you Town Council was about to answer your question, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's necessary to get into a debate about it at this point and I don't know that, uh, it would be helpful at this point. I'm simply asking that you do what the open meeting law requires, which is what is on the agenda right now and just simply vote to refer it to me.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, send this on to our Town Council to look into the, uh, conflict of interest, I mean, the open meeting law, uh, complaint.
And issue a response, correct?
And, right, and respond to our request.
Okay. I have a motion by Joe.
Oh, second.
I have a second by John. Is there any other discussion?
And that response will be in a future agenda item?
Town Council?
Uh, what I'll, what I'll do is I'll prepare a response and I'll copy the board on the response.
That's why your question, or did you have another?
I have another question.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. There's no other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to department reports and we'll start with the Town Administrator.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment myself to, uh, share just a couple of very brief thoughts on Member Bush. I met Jim early on when we were, uh, developing, we being, you know, very, we're seeing, it was the tour train project. Jim always appeared to participate in after the project, uh, so Ruth, uh, Jim immediately set up to volunteer. As we know, as the paper did say, it rarely Jim showed up and he did show up for the all-volunteer organization. And although he always looked very sharp at his traditional black white railroad passenger conductors, the uniform that I think fit him best and really, um, displayed his spirit was that of Santa Claus when he portrayed it. Berkshire scenic operates, uh, our Christmas trains essentially from Thanksgiving weekend all the way through until sometime in December. And it's, uh, it's a burden on the volunteers of that organization to offer it, but Jim would sign up very early on, uh, and portray Santa every Sunday for that operation. And some of my fondest memories are of Jim, uh, Sunday morning portraying Santa at another venue here in town and immediately going from that venue to the Berkshire scenic venue without hesitation, without complaint, uh, and immediately did it again. And, uh, I would have the opportunity to, to speak with Jim, uh, happy he was portraying Santa, uh, as a conductor in any of those trains and the man always had as heartwarming as I. And that Jim, uh, that I will miss, that he contributed greatly, I think, to this community. And again, as I said in the paper, I, I don't think his, uh, his loss will be fully realized for quite some time, but I know that he would want us to continue, march on and forward. And with that, uh, tonight we can discuss our town meeting on September the twenty-fourth. However, we do have a town meeting workshop scheduled for Monday, September the twenty-first, to be held at five thirty P M. at O Field, located at three seventy-one Old Columbia Street. So please, folks, I know we have the work in street entrance, but please use the Old Columbia Street entrance and this is for our town meeting members to attend and go over, uh, in anticipation of what the warrant articles are. We do ask you, uh, for any sense about any of the articles. And then you also please R S V P. to our town clerk, Haley Meswar, and let her know by calling to clerk's office at seven four three, eight three zero zero, extension one seven six, uh, by this Thursday if possible. Uh, and even if you aren't, don't R S V., but then you can attend, please still attend. We just want to be able to work out logistics because, uh, COVID nineteen has certainly affected, uh, how we operate everything that we do. So please aware of face covering, practice social distance and guidelines. So once again, town meeting workshops, the town meeting members, Monday, September twenty-first, five thirty P M. will go over the town warrant articles. Um, we're still working on logistics for town meeting. Things are shaping up well. We'll be putting finishing touches, uh, with town staff early next week. I'm going to feel that, saying that Aggie Fair folks, uh, for their support, uh, they've, they've been supportive, uh, of us being able to use that facility. Uh, today we participated in the, uh, we being Chief Bacon, myself, uh, members of the Adams Police Department. We participated in the annual Elizabeth Freeman Center's fundraiser, walking mile in her shoes to support the, uh, operations of Elizabeth Freeman Center. We, uh, successfully walked, uh, from the police station to here to Town Hall at noon. We had some members of the Elizabeth Freeman, uh, staff, uh, with us taking photographs, etc. That will all be made, made public. Uh, I don't say embarrassing, so I think we did just fine with it. Uh, but thank Chief Bacon for organizing. We raised, uh, some funds for that, uh, excellent organization. I have to say we had some fun, uh, doing it. Just a few members of our police department who, uh, were quite eloquent, uh, in, in high heels. So I give them credit, uh, for being able to do that. That was, that was a lot of fun. Uh, we got a lot of beams and waves along Park Street as we were doing that. Project-wise, uh, folks have seen the, the large electronic billboards installed at the north and south entrance to the commercial street corridor. Our MAFSTOC, partners at MAFSTOC, Maximillion have begun, uh, the routine project. Uh, we know that this, as the project evolves, we're going to have some traffic implications with that project. Those billboards should be up, they'll advertise exactly what's going on. But for our folks at home that want to know, check our Facebook page and that will mount you back over to our town webpage or go directly to the town webpage. Save it as a, as a favorite in your internet browser and you'll see a tab that says construction news update. Go there and at least once a week that will be updated and we're gonna do our best to communicate to the public effectively what the traffic, uh, impacts are for that project. There may be weeks where we don't have any, there may be weeks where we have some. We're gonna do our best, uh, to communicate that information out. So that will be kind of the home place, uh, to find that, that information.
Jay, um, with the, the, what happened when we did Park Street over, um, we had many, um, vehicles passing through the community using, um, West Road and East Road, um, some at a very high rate of speed, um, to avoid downtown. Uh, this is most likely going to happen again. Um, do you and the chief plan to have police, more police presence than usual on those two, uh, two roads?
We, uh, we just have our, our mobile radar unit alerting drivers to their speed, fully repaired and serviceable, uh, that moves around town. We'll be using that tool and then I'm pretty confident that Chief will be using some dedicated controls to those, particularly during, um, commuter hours, uh, to those areas. So we are sensitive to it, uh, to our residents on those, those, uh, alternative byways, uh, and we'll be using our best to put some police presence out there. Uh, we did also, you know, we did look at road condition as well, particularly on, on West Road, road condition, just to maybe, uh, tidy up some of the, the lesser night areas of the roadway, it's just caused for him to first to the laws monitor the road surface as well to address that need. Uh, and as I said before, I'd probably say it multiple times during the beach, probably the eighteen-month duration, if not longer in this project, is simply the price of progress, simply the price of being able to, to have, uh, good infrastructure. So yes, there will be impacts, we know that. We'll do our best to, to get the word out ahead of time and we just simply ask for our residents to sit in the station, uh, as we verify a major entrance corridor in this town. Most of our projects, uh, are going along well, uh, some normal meeting issues with a, a few of them, but folks may see the, the Grand Street Drainage Project, Valley Street area, is mobilized a little bit more to see the, the brand-new drainage culverts, uh, out there close weekend, uh, to appear this week. So our folks, uh, who are in that neighborhood, that precinct, just be advised, we'll be a little bit more construction activity, uh, out there. Uh, John, you had asked, uh, I believe at our previous meeting, a little bit of information about Memorial, uh, School. Uh, we'll be doing a walkthrough, uh, with our E C W. director, uh, as well as our community development team, the building commission, uh, next week. We'll have a report probably thereafter of, of future uses, uh, for that, that building.
Is there a date that, uh, the board members want to attend?
Uh, it hasn't been, uh, I guess we're just being on schedules, but I'll let everybody know when we, when we do that.
Thank you.
Uh, and lastly, we received a, a lot of feedback, positive feedback this summer from people passing through town as well as residents, on how beautiful our downtown looks with, with flowers. And I'm not sure if people know that, uh, our town staff help out with the E C W. planting those flowers. So now fall, planting season. So tomorrow morning, uh, you may see someone that's out there in Park Street area planting flowers, Chief and I are already ready to go. So we'll be helping out there. So if you see us out there, give us a tune and a wave, uh, but we're doing our best to, uh, beautify our neighborhood. Uh, I think that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Will you be planting in heels?
I think, uh, that was a one-time event for this calendar year. I look forward to it for, for next year, but, uh, no, I don't, I don't think we'll be.
Oh, kidding aside, are there any other questions for Town Administrator from his report?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple. Uh, I did see a lot of activity up on the Valley Street area with the large culvert. Um, were they able to ascertain the situation, what was causing, uh, the drainage problem? Or are they just making the end portion of it just, you know, a large culvert to, you know, be safe with water as it comes down? Did they find anything out of place?
Yes. Essentially, the issue is, over the years, the existing drainage piping was a mismatch of size. Normal engineering theory is small to large. In that section of town, it was small, large, small, which creates hydrodynamic damming, which creates pressure backup and that's why some of our residents were finding flooding in their backyards because some of that drainage would run through people's private property. That will be corrected. The size will be corrected, which will allow for flow and will stop the, uh, the geyser method, which is caused by the back pressure reducing from, they're, a large from a small, excuse me, large side or a small manner.
So how far then will they be, uh, going to rectify that problem? Uh, because I know there's a lot of ledge if they go on. I haven't been up there, but I see at the bottom of Valley Street, a lot of things going on. Is there any new piping being put up above?
Okay, the Lincoln Street area as well.
Okay.
Other than through there.
Because there's also a lot of ledge up there if you walk higher and I think that's caused the problem though.
There's also some very beautiful stonework that people don't see that's actually down below the, the street level from prior grassman that, that building infrastructure is incredible. The grasswork, a lot of it held up for years, but like with anything else, has to be gotten to and repaired. So those residents will be seeing some, some additional work there, but it's moving along. The, the, the reason why you saw the south end work first is because the south end, Valley Street, where it ties into the main thoroughfare, Columbia Street, it just needs to be done first and those areas identified, located first and now they're working on it back up.
And the money that was put aside for that project, there won't be any overrun?
Too early with the project, yeah.
Right, because, uh, that's clearly quite a project. Um, and you mentioned Berkshire scenic rail. I was happy to see that up and running, as I mentioned the last meeting. And, uh, I ran into Glenn Deal and Glenn said that you have, you've been having, uh, good numbers. That's really encouraging.
Yes, ridership has been good with COVID nineteen protocol, uh, has been, um, positively reported on by passengers. Unfortunately, some of our volunteers who are older, uh, did not want to volunteer. So we do have a volunteer shortage. So if any trains get canceled, it's not for lack of ridership, it's simply for a lack of, uh, volunteer help, uh, in this pandemic. Uh, Jim was willing to participate as a volunteer. We have some very dedicated, Mr. Baker, uh, meeting member, uh, but it's very dedicated folks who are coming out even though of this to, to keep those trains running. We've had some, uh, great feedback to the traditional passenger cars we're using. Uh, and I, and I do have to say, you know, going back to... And I do have to say, you know, going back to several years ago, I know that there had been some debate about the Adams Station building, but we were able to, Labor Day weekend for the first time, utilize the restroom facilities there. And I have to say, it was very satisfying to stand back and see this hub of activity. That was all in that area, all in the Music Street area, between parking at the visitor's center, people on the trail, people in the Adams Station area, and that's even before the ticket office and gift shop was able to get outfitted in the base. It just created this very positive energy buzz. So I think the future continues to be bright. Again, I love it to be developed like that. That's just not reality. And I'd also like to say that the chief had his wife and youngest daughter out for a visit on Labor Day weekend, and one of the events that we did is we went for a train ride.
All right. Yeah, and I heard from a reliable source too, that Burke has been dividing his property, and the two garages are going to be in one lot, and then the train station is going to be in another. I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, because I didn't know that your group was kind of interested, but the cost was a little bit, but fortunately. And that's all I have.
All right. That brings us to town council's report.
Thank, thank you. I also want to express my sorrow regarding Jim's passing. He was a good man, and Adams meant a lot to him, and he did a lot for Adams. As far as my report since September 1st, I responded to a request for advice from the Board of Health. I reviewed a complaint for violation of the open meeting law. I reviewed an application for a liquor license transfer. I reviewed a claim. I attended the Board of Health hearing, or meeting today.
Any questions for town council? Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
That brings us to subcommittee and liaison reports. I have nothing. Cameron's this way, so John, you're up first.
Just a couple items. The extension of the Ash Multico Bike Trail, the rail trail from Line Street to Adams Crossroad has been forgotten. It was some roadblocks that came up, and the project ought to be pushed back a bit, but it is back on track, and it is, the engineering is, you know, working towards the end, to the 25, to where we can be 25% as a community investment in this project, which will then enable us to get on the tip, to be able to begin to be, to have money identified from state and federal sources, to be able to begin that project. But it's still a ways away. That's what, let me know that it continues. There's still conversations that need to be had with the landowners, and contracts need to be signed, and, but just to let everybody know that the town is continuing to work that final leg of the trail to North Adams. The last thing I have is, just to get the, everybody to start thinking about this, is that we've been working on that Route 8 project for many years. It's finally coming to fruition. It's going to cost over $7 million to complete. So now, not resting, thinking forward with the town administrator, community development, and the MPO at District One, is the, what we call the current highway, or the Route 8 section in the northern part of our community, which was built. It used to be a two-lane road. It was then changed into a four-lane, I would like to say highway, but a four-lane road, which over time has deteriorated. As everyone knows, it goes down that way. So we, that is the next part of Route 8 that we are working on the vision. The vision currently is that the town would like to go back to a two-lane system with turnarounds. Again, this is in the early stages. It will take years, as did the Route 8 southern part project has taken, but we're going to be committed to this, and to make it a beautiful entrance to our community from the north, but to go down to two lanes, and to slow people down, to enjoy, and to stop by to see Adams. When that four-lane highway was built, and again, I'm just going by memory, that the thought back then was, with the bypass not being, it was, it just didn't come to fruition, the bypass, that people, well, county government wanted to get people through the county quickly. Now, things have changed. Every community wants everyone to slow down and to stop and enjoy their communities. So we are going to be going down that road. And I think it's going to be a great project. It's going to take probably another seven, eight years to come to fruition, but that is the second and three phases for the, for Route 8, the main thoroughfare through the town of Adams, who's been there probably 100 years. It's going to be there for 100 more, so, but we're going to, we're going to make it, we're going to bring it up to where it should be. So just, you know, we're going to hear a lot more about this from the town administrator and from the community development office, but that will be the next phase, just getting the word out there that that's what we're going to start to work, since the bike trail's going to be completed. Now, we've got to get back to focusing on our roads, and that's, and that's the next leg that we're going to focus on as part of the, Adams will be working with VRPC and the MPO District One. Thank you.
Yep, I attended a park commission meeting just the other day, and Jim was on my mind there because he was the liaison, but I guess I'm second in command, so I did attend it. And it was a good presentation put together by Cecilia Norcross about soccer, well versed on the COVID situation and necessities that they'll be taking as a league. Once again, it was a great presentation. You could tell that she had put a lot of time and studied into what they were going to do. There was also some talk, it hinges on a little bit of confusion about the Russell Field Project, about the plate, home plate being moved up eight feet. And as I remember, the reason that it had to be moved up was to make it official, the distance between home plate and the backstop, so that tournaments and things could be held there, because it was too close of a span. And members on the parks commission were wondering about that, because their belief was that the telephone pole, which is in center field, should the plate be moved up eight feet, that that pole may be obstruction. But Robert Tolber, our DPW director, spoke to them, and I guess he went out and measured the distances, and there shouldn't be a problem with that pole. Another thing that was brought up about the project was lighting, and they really would like lighting there, but Mr. Tolber had a proposal brought forth by, I won't name the electric company, they just picked someone, and it came up to $91,000 to, you know, put in LED lighting and auto wiring, and everybody was in awe of the price tag for that. So they're hoping to find a way of raising money to try to help get some lights down the field, which I think is an important part of any ball field. And I think that was the main gist of the meeting, as I can recall. Also, tomorrow, I'll be on a call with the full membership of the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership. It's just not the executive board, it's the members from the communities involved in other nonprofit and environmental concerns. And this will be our first meeting. It's going to be through Zoom and phone, because of course, the COVID. And the Mohawk Trail Regional Partnership just allotted monies for applications that were put in, and I strongly believe, I'm positive, that the town of Adams has received $20,000, once again, to spend on something that they think, that we think would be of use to our community. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Joe. Cameron's still on you, so you would like to take up announcements in the order first?
Okay, well, I got a few things. First of all, I did like to say that I really like how the town hall has been taking care of those grounds and things. It really looks quite nice. And I noticed there's been some branches removed, that big Princeton Beech. I don't know if the town took them off. As you come through the bank, the drive up, there's been some freshly cut limbs that were starting to die back. And I brought this to the attention. That's a wonderful kind of tree, and it's starting to have some trouble on top. You can see that it's dying back. I think it'd be worthwhile to have an arborist take a look at it before we lose that tree. I mean, all trees die of maturity, but that one is, you know, the longest we can keep it, just like the elm tree in Lane Corral, you know, by trying to preserve it the best. I think we're all better off for that. And as far as the public to understand, Jay, could you tell the people, we've had a few more cases of COVID, haven't we? About four cases, right?
Four or five, but one thing that's very difficult is, you don't know the epidemiology of how it's been contracted. Some of those are within the same household that can be induced. We were actually discussing today, we believe we're still in the gray. There's four stages, there's gray, green, yellow, and red. It all depends on the number of cases that come into play within a 14-day period. Last several weeks since that plan was put into place, we've been in the gray, which is, which is excellent. It's natural that every community is going to receive some more. We are monitoring it, our Board of Health is monitoring it, Mr. Blaisdell, our health agent, is monitoring it. I wish I could tell everybody this was a particular source. I think the best public health information we can give is continue to mask up, socially, physically distance, wash your hands, and just be conscious of that as you move up. As we move into colder weather, you know, and as more people become indoors, we have to be a little bit more, you know, conscious of that. But really, the health behind it, the science behind it hasn't changed much, there hasn't been any developments with it. Stay masked, stay physically distanced, and just wash your hands and try to stay healthy as best as possible. Should we see a rapid spike, or a spike that the health officials say is not natural, we'll make sure that we get out in front of it, and we'll try to stay a little bit inverted terms of the epidemiology of it. There's also balance that we're trying to have to with people's, you know, front of the.
A good point that you brought up, and I was going to bring up, is as the cold weather comes in, it has a tendency or propensity to stay more active. And I know that the schools, unless somebody has a reason, I'm not sure what the reasons would be, but everybody is going to have to have a flu shot by December 31st. And I would encourage everybody to get that, because it'd be helpful to get that, because it's very hard to determine COVID from the flu, because some of the symptoms are like. So if you have a flu shot, not saying you're not going to get the flu, but if you do have a flu shot, and you come down with this, things that are equal to a flu and COVID, and you say I had a flu shot, then they can look toward the COVID side of it. And I won't say anymore, that's all I can think of right now. But I would like you, Madam Chairman, to repeat the number to Spectrum. Yeah, would you please?
I will at the end.
Okay.
John?
All right.
I just have a couple of items. So for town meeting members who are sitting at home, you should have received a copy of the warrant in mail. The booklet should be there. Town administrator talked about the town meeting workshop that is scheduled for Monday. That information is also on the website. I did want to report back to the board. We had a dangerous dog hearing that was scheduled on August 25th, and a decision was rendered, and the, the family was able to go to district court, and they have filed, they have a hearing on October 9th, so that is continuing. All of that information has been given to town council, as well as the chief and animal control officer. So that continues. And as member Novak requested, the number for Spectrum customer support line, if anybody is, hopefully you can hear this piece, but if your audio is low, or you're having some connection issues with community television's broadcast of this meeting, please contact Spectrum customer support line at 833-780-1880. So that brings us to executive session. I do need a motion to go into executive session for reason number six, which is stated on your agenda.
I'll make a motion that before going to executive session for reason number six, which is to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
It's a motion by Joe.
I'll second.
I have a second by John. This is a roll call vote.
Yes.
I'd say yes for me, so that is unanimous. I am going to just ask for a five-minute recess, so that we can say goodbye to some of the folks on the Zoom call. I will ask that Becky Ferguson stay on the call from community development, so that she can talk to us about the item, the executive session. But for everyone else, I would like to say thank you very much for attending our meeting.
And Madam Chairman, did you say that when we come out of a public session, that it falls into adjournment?
Oh, it wasn't part of your motion, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, so when we come out of executive session, it will just be to adjourn. So thank you again. Again, we'll take a five-minute recess. It's 8:30, so we'll start back up at 8:35.
Is that saying we're heading out to the line?
He hung up.
Yeah, did you? You had to go along with, you had to pick a trail there. Which one did you go up?
Parks.
Thank you, Kathy. Have a good night.
Yeah, throw a thunderhill.
It was a cloud. It was still pretty.